Hello, everybody. I'd like to say hello to all people. Um, let's start the meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Bear with me, folks. We have a few things we are going to go through as a board and as a consensus builder here. Um, so, to start off, we went into executive session and we discussed a legal matter, negotiations, and a personnel matter. At this point, before I adopt an agenda, I want to make an announcement, and I'm going to ask the board, their indulgence. Um, what I want to do is amend the agenda. So I'm asking for my colleagues to listen in and act accordingly. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to approve a contract with Capital Region BOCES and its district superintendent Lauren Gammell to serve as a consultant to the, oh my God, oh my God, board, oh my God, I can't even read my own writing, to the board in completing the search process for the next Shenandoah superintendent. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda? Manu's first, Carla's second, all in favor? Thank you so very much. With that, we will be amending the agenda. We will, Mrs. Scalia, Ms. Scalia will come up. We will be adding 3C to the action items. This is a study session tonight, not a business meeting. Um, so we will vote on the resolution when we get there. At this point as well, I also want to indicate to the public and tell the public, one of the largest roles that a board has is hiring a superintendent. We do not take this lightly. It's a, at Shenandoah, we are a proud community. A lot goes into this community as I'm watching, as I'm looking at many educators in front of me. We know what goes into this district, and we certainly understand the role that we're about to take on as a board, as a consensus meeting. With that, when we were discussing previously, we were talking about how we get there. What's the process? What's the timeline, right? How is this going to look to the public? Very important that this discussion is taking place in the public eye, transparent, and everybody knows what we are doing. That is what we are about, and that's what we want the public to know. Okay? Many of you have asked questions, who have inquired to my colleagues at PTA meetings, at different venues, so we're going to start this process tonight. In doing so, in our conversations that ensued, we talked about different kind of ways of, what, what different searches look like. One is a confidential search, and one is a traditional search. As we as a board continue to have this conversation, I'm going to invite Dr. Elizabeth Wood, if you may know her. She is the deputy superintendent of our Capital Region BOCES, deputy to Lauren Gammell, who was not able to make it tonight. She's in New York City, starting, starting the wonderful parade down to the Nisba Convention that some of my colleagues are going to go to this week. So I'm going to invite Elizabeth up to just give a broad overview of what each of the search looks like. Are you okay with that, Elizabeth?
Yes, is that now?
Would you mind?
I don't know. Hi, Doctor. Hello. I don't think you're.
Is that on?
This is trying to help.
We should take a look.
Yeah. I think, yeah, they're left. You're right.
Right as well.
So, um, thank you for being interested in moving the process forward and potentially working with Capital Region BOCES. Uh, in some early conversations about what a search can look like, there really are two types of searches that Capital Region BOCES and really all search consultants lead. And, uh, we refer to them as a traditional search, and the other would be a confidential search. And the searches are really identical in every single way, all the way up to one finite point in the process. So, uh, if Capital Region BOCES is selected as your search consultant, what we would do is have an online survey, and the entire community would be invited to respond to five questions. We would then host community forums, and individuals can come in person or join us online for the couple of virtual ones that we would run, respond to those very same five questions. The board would be provided all of the feedback that comes from that. We would then move to posting the position, creating a brochure that is specific to Shenandoah, advertising in the places that we advertise. Uh, we would then be working with the board to determine which candidates would go into the applicant pool, having a first round interview, a second round, and that's when the interview processes become fluid. It, it kind of depends on how many candidates you have, how many times, how many rounds you do. That's where the process is all the same. If you choose to do a traditional search, at that point, you would do stakeholder interviews. And with stakeholder interviews, typically you would have your top few candidates cycle through a few stakeholder round interviews where people would sign confidentiality agreements, be trained as part of the process, and, and be informed that this, their role is to give input, right? This has to be a comprehensive process. You would have seen them many times through an interview process. And a really important point is the role of reference checking. And so stakeholders, the role of stakeholders would be to give input based on what they saw in that finite moment. If the board chose to go with the traditional search, stakeholder rounds would be part of that. It adds about two to three weeks, but usually time is not the, what drives the blues, the other option, which is the confidential search. Based on a lot of searches, what tends to happen is as soon as candidates ask the question, so these are very often sitting superintendents, sometimes deputy superintendents, but very often sitting superintendents, when they are weighing whether or not to consider applying, they are thinking, am I going to tell my current board that I love you and you just gave me a contract extension? And I hope we continue to work well together for years to come. However, I also am very interested in working over here. And please don't hold it against me or any future negotiations or contracts, but I am just going to put my toe in the water and apply over there. But no hard feelings. I love all of you anyway, and I love, I'm so committed to this district. Right? So what has happened in the past when boards have chosen to go the traditional route is we get all the way up, and a couple of candidates have put in and said, I'm really interested in being the superintendent there, and I'm really secretly hoping that they are never going to go to the stakeholder round. Not that stakeholder rounds don't give great input, of course they do, but it is nearly impossible with 30-plus people typically to absolutely hold everybody to confidentiality, even if there are confidential statements that are signed. It is just a reality. And people applying are going to consider, am I willing to put my reputation on the line, my current relationship with my current board, to apply for this other district? Now, there are very valid reasons why a superintendent may say to a board, I am looking elsewhere. Maybe they don't have a great relationship. Maybe it's been a very small district, and they've been there a very long time, and they're looking to try something larger. Maybe they have an elderly family member on the other side of the state, and it's been made very clear that they are trying to relocate to the Capital Region. Right? There are reasons why. But what has traditionally happened is it has limited the candidate pool. It is absolutely the purview of the board to make the determination as to whether to do a confidential search or a traditional search. But we wanted to share with you those two options and the pros and cons of each, and the reality that happens. And I will also share, it has been a while since Capital Region BOCES has led a traditional search. The last time that they did one, the top two candidates pulled out right before stakeholder rounds. That is one example, right? Example one. But could that apply elsewhere? Yes, it, it does make boards tend to be very concerned about the candidate pool. Everything else in the process is the same.
Could you also comment on, you know, to the degree that you do these types of searches, specifically the confidentiality one? Because you, you said it's been a long time since you've done the, the traditional one.
Uh, I don't have an exact count of how many Lauren has led personally as either when she was in my role or as district superintendent of Capital Region BOCES. I think we're in the 17 range just during her tenure, and she had, I believe, I believe. Right? Because she was doing them with, uh, the previous district superintendent when she was in my role. So I believe, I've heard her say that her, don't quote me, I believe I heard the number was 17, and I believe one was traditional because of the concerns about the candidate pool. Again, it is the purview of the board. There, it is wonderful to get stakeholder feedback, and you have to weigh that, right? With the robustness of the candidate pool. It's just a reality.
Perfect. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to open to comments because we want to deliberate at the board table on this. Um, if there are no further comments, I will ask if everybody's comfortable to take a vote at this point on how to go forward only because timeline would start very quickly.
Well, I have a question.
Of course.
So, Dr. Wood, it's good to see you. Um, mentioned that prior to the interviews, there would be stakeholder input, right?
Yep.
So, um, we will, as a board, be receiving input.
Forums, forums and surveys, yep.
From quite a number of different, I would say, groups.
Yep.
How, if any, would those questions or concerns be brought into the interview process, right? Because I want there to be a way for the stakeholders, you know what I mean? For their voices to be heard, whether or not they're.
I'm sorry. No, you're not. I just sat down, pretty much, Charlie. Um, so, the board will receive all survey feedback, unimpeded. Community forums, we have communications folks there, and they write as fast as their little hands can write, or they type as fast as they can type, and you get all of that based on whatever we were able to capture. Boards can then take that feedback and really make their own internal checklist about what they are looking for in the next superintendent, and also customize questions that they might not have otherwise thought of based on the community feedback.
Okay. Sounds reassuring, that even though there's no stakeholder input, their voices.
Their voices are being heard, correct. Yep.
And I would also say that the feedback collected, boards very often put an overview document back out to the community to let them know, we did hear you, and here are some themes that we heard from the survey. And that can also be very helpful information for an incoming superintendent to get the pulse of what, what was happening and what was the feedback in the school district while you were running the surveys and the community forums.
But they would get that after, or they have the process, yeah.
After, once hired and onboarded.
Yep, I see, yep.
I have a question. So how are the forum, people who's going to be in the forum? They, everybody's doing the survey, and some will be, you know, they can, how do, how do we choose those people?
Great question. So the survey is open to absolutely everybody in the community. All employees can take it. It is, we ask that you send it out to high school students. Uh, the, people can take it multiple times, actually. It's one of those, like, we don't limit it. It's not as though it captures, you know, some unique identifier. If you forgot something, you can go back in. And like we said, the board gets all of that. Community forums, right now, if, if we are appointed as the search consultant, we are planning for 15 of them. And we would have elementary teachers, elementary staff, middle school teachers, middle school, we would, and staff, and all the way down, community, buildings and grounds, transportation. So we would invite different groups. We would list that on the webpage that we'd be working with the district to have, to, to have all the information and the dates available to people. So we would put, ask that you put that out so that people would be invited. And also, we would remind people, if the date doesn't work, okay, because it's, we talk in the forum the exact same five questions that are on the survey. And when people who participate in the community forum wrap up, very often, we will remind them, hey, you might want to go fill out that survey again because you may have heard, if you had already done it, or you didn't feel like you had airtime, or you thought of something while you were driving home, you can go back and fill out that survey again because maybe you heard something, and your experience has been entirely different, and you want to represent that, or you want to validate what you heard somebody else say.
How long is the process? I didn't, I didn't hear.
A superintendent search process, even with an aggressive timeline, is, it, months. So if you were to choose to appoint tonight, then we would begin the surveys October 27th, and they would be open for about a month.
A timeline.
And then it would go.
Yep.
It really starts to depend on a number of factors. But the goal would be to, I'm just looking at it, allow the month of March for contract negotiations with an appointment sometime in April. Could it be more aggressive? Yes, depending on. Yes, depending on applicants. But it's a lot of time that the board will be putting into the search and their calendar, and then we have to respect the candidates and their calendars, and it just takes some time.
Yeah, I just wanted to put out to the community the expectation.
Oh, yes, that could happen, yes, okay.
Although it is starting right away with tonight's action.
Yep. So with that, does everybody feel comfortable that we could vote confidential or traditional? I will put, let's just do a yay and nay around the board. Let's go up if, who feels comfortable going confidential?
So you're saying that the exact same timeline, just when we get to the part for the, for those stakeholder interviews, it's not traditional, we're going the confidential route?
Correct.
Sorry.
Yep. Confidential.
Confidential.
Okay, we have, you got the unanimous, Vanessa, thank you so much. This has been, this has been a seamless conversation tonight. This has been a great conversation tonight. This has been great, the give and take and the conversation and deliberation at the board table is exactly what we want. Thank you for your indulgence as well. So I appreciate your time. So with that, I know we have a full agenda tonight, and I have one more announcement that I need to make. Bittersweet, very bittersweet. Mrs. Miller has submitted a letter of resignation this afternoon from the Board of Education effective immediately. I, as president and part of leadership on the board, will be meeting with district leadership and legal counsel to formulate a plan moving forward regarding the vacancy on the BOE, or board. We do have a policy in place for this. We certainly thank Mrs. Miller for all her dedicated years of service on the board. She made a difference and left an indelible impact. More to follow on that. Okay? Thank you. I'm going to also, this is a study session, so there are no public comments tonight. Any questions, come to the office of Public Information Officer or share with the board and superintendent as appropriate. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the board. President, operational questions, concerns are typically addressed by the superintendent and/or designee. I need to adopt an agenda anyway, so can I get a motion to it? Did I do it when I amended it? Correct, so that all fell into place. Good for me. I'm going to have the students come up first too, if they have any comments tonight that they want to make. Eric? Thank you.
So for the Green and White Letter Awards, I recognize some faces there. So I personally thought it was a really great experience. It's definitely a good, as a student, it's definitely a good opportunity for students to be recognized for their academic achievement. And not only that, but also for their dedication to clubs as well within the school. So one thing I find pretty crazy is that quarter one ends on November 7th. So really close. Something also close to that is SATs on November 8th, right after PSATs are over. Now we get to do that, so. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for that inspiring, motivational speech.
You're going to be great. You'll be great.
Hello, I'm here for SFA Senate. We just like to inform you about some of our upcoming events, such as last meeting, we talked about the friendship dinner, friendship dinner that's coming up, which is going to be in motion. And then we also are planning for the Snowball Dance that's also coming up. We are looking for committee heads for that. And SFA is also happy to announce that we have created another committee, which is the Lost and Found Committee, that will, we have two separate parts of them. We have one in High School East and we have another part in High School West. This way, it's not as confusing and that about sums it up.
Excuse me.
Oh, it's, it's been an after.
Do you have dates on those, on both the friendship and the snowball?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Do you know what they are then?
I think it's November 20th, around that. It's the Thursday before Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But not the Thursday?
No. And then the Snowball Dance is February 7th.
Thank you.
Also, at our previous senate meeting, the PTSA committee went up. So as a member, as a co-head of the PTSA committee, not only did we apply for a national PTA grant for our Mental Health Awareness Field Day, but we also applied for the Town of Clifton Park Community Grant, in which we did acquire $300 for our project. So we told that to the senate at a meeting. And last night, we went to the town board meeting where we accepted our grant, so we're very excited. The national PTA grant should, like, the notice of when we should get that grant should come either late October, early November, so we're still waiting on the news about that. And then also, the senate officers, and soon the senate as itself, are currently working on fixing our bylaws and our constitution as we used to have non-voting senate members, but now all senate members vote on like a rotating basis. So we are working first as the officers to get rid of some of that language about those non-voting members, and soon we'll bring it to the senate themselves, we're going to have them vote on it, have a committee, all of that stuff, so we can make it updated to the more current year.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, now would you move into our agenda?
Good evening. So we do have a robust agenda tonight, so my comments to open them will be free. As the students mentioned, it's been a very busy couple of weeks. Lots of awards that are holding, from National Honor Society to Green and White Society. I think we were at Triumph Music Honor Society. And as Eric mentioned, PSATs were Saturday, and so that was a big undertaking for our schools. And this upcoming weekend, as was mentioned, a few of our board members, both virtually and person, will travel with myself and Mr. Davis and Ms. Carmen to our New York State School Boards Association Conference, where Mr. Davis and Ms. Carmen will present on social, emotional learning and mental health to school board members across the state. So it's a wonderful opportunity to showcase the work that we do here in Shen in that arena. And I thank Matt and Vicky for their willingness to present that information. And I look forward to the conference and sharing our findings when we return. So our presentations this evening, we will start with our federal and state grants overview from Ms. McKenna and Ms. Hazleton, followed by our summer curriculum and summer work program highlights, where we will have several presenters that the board always loves to see, some of our teaching staff that take on leadership roles over the course of the summer to make sure that our students have an incredible experience. And then we will have a virtual presentation from our special education program review that was conducted last spring. Then we will have a data synchronicity presentation, and we will close with a nice announcement about our new website. So I would ask Ms. McKenna and Ms. Hazleton to come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, as Dr. Wilson Turner mentioned, I will give an update on federal and state grants for the 25-26 school year. And I will be joined by colleagues, Brian Hadleton, Matt Davis, and Vicky Wild to present on brief updates on the grants that they oversee and support. So this first slide, this table provides an overview of our consolidated grant and IDA grants for the 25-26 school year totaling just over $2.9 million and how they support students, teachers, and school programs across the district. You'll see Title I supports teachers, tutors, STEM instructors, and aides for academic and socially-emotional and enrichment programs, including after-school, summer, and homeless student supports. Our Title II A funds instructional coaches, teachers, and administrator collaboration and professional learning for induction and mentoring for our new teachers. Title III, for our ENL kiddos, supports our ENL Summer Literacy Program and teachers and program materials for that program. What you don't see up here is our Title III Immigrant Grant, which we were awarded the allocation late, and we are in the process of submitting that to the New York State Education Department, but all these other grants have already been approved.
Is it another title?
So there is one up here. Here is, uh, there's two, two Title Threes.
Title III for Ls and Title III for immigrant. What you don't see up here is the Title III immigrant.
But there is a number.
It is there.
Oh, my apologies. I didn't realize I put that in. We have not applied for it, but we are in the process of applying for it.
They had to submit and then up submitting with everything that was going on.
Oh, yes, that allocation came in late. And then finally, Title IV funds support social, emotional, and learning initiatives, equity-focused programs, professional learning, and writers and artists in residence. I am now going to turn it over to Brian to talk about the 611 and 619 grants.
Just really quick, so the reductions, is it because of numbers? Is that why we're seeing reductions?
Yeah, actually reductions were seen across the state in probably most districts, but they are based on, for Title I, number of students in poverty that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And our Title III grants are based on the number of immigrants and English language learners that we have in the district.
Thank you.
Good evening. So 611 grant provides funding to support special education staffing, professional development, curriculum development, materials, and student services to ensure high-quality instruction and growth opportunities for our students with disabilities. A few points with the 611 grant, it provides support, staffing, and benefits for our special education teachers, aides, and school psychologists. We also are able to fund TCIS and com training, conference opportunities, and curriculum development. Materials and supplies are also included in the 611 grant. Nearly $90,000 has been allocated for PPE, teacher subscriptions, curriculum materials, assessments, and instructional resources. We also are able to have student support enrichment through transportation for field trips and mandated set-asides for outside partners and agencies that support our students with disabilities. The 619 has to do with preschool and CPSE programs. That includes administrative oversight, mandated services, and also further partnerships with outside agencies serving students with disabilities. So like, that's partial salary and benefits for special education, academic administration, student services, and program focus, like, supports preschool and CPSE programs to ensure high-quality early intervention and special education services.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So I've got the next three grants up here, and I've spoke at the several board meetings about these, so I'll keep this relatively brief. So the Recub's Mental Health Grant expires this June. And this grant is unique because it required the district to make a matching contribution in order to receive the grant funds. So the total amount of the grant is $249,000, give or take. And Shen used a combination of general fund dollars, ARPA funds that have since expired, and in-kind contributions from existing staffing to match that amount. Through this grant, we hired a student support counselor who serves all eight of our elementary schools. She just came back from maternity leave and has a robust caseload of students across the district. We also hired a district attendance teacher who serves students in grades K through 8. Nicole, you may see her driving around in a shine vehicle all across the district, doing home visits with families and occasionally transporting students to school who have missed the bus or various other things. Again, a robust caseload, and you'll see later in Mr. Neller's presentation that she has made a demonstrable impact on the district's chronic absenteeism rate, especially at the K level. We also hired a sixth-grade health teacher, and we're providing over 90% of sixth graders now with access to health curriculum. And this grant also pays for professional development related to mental health. We offered a session yesterday, actually, about suicide safety that the grant paid for. So next up is the Learning Technology Grants. This is something that I collaborate with Vicky Wild and our technology coaches on. This grant provided the district with $300,000 to invest in educational technology professional development. So what we did with this grant is hired building-level AI coordinators. So each elementary building, each middle school building, both high school buildings have a total across the district of 22 teachers who are serving as AI coordinators. They are able to provide professional development for teachers. They're able to provide one-on-one coaching in small groups. And they are really supporting the district's initiatives to dabble into the world of AI. So this grant also supported the purchase of Magic School, which is the teacher-and-student-facing AI software that the district has selected. It also enabled us to get some subscriptions to Google Gemini Pro that many folks across the district now have access to. So these funds support developing curriculum. So this year, we developed a student-facing curriculum that all students across the district have experienced about the ethical use of AI. And of course, we're creating teacher professional development that'll be available to all teachers across the district. Excitingly, this grant also requires us to develop a website and document and memorialize all of our work so that it's available for free to teachers across New York State. And lastly, the Department of Labor Teacher Residency Grant. So this is new to Shen this year. So we received a grant for $30,000 for up to eight teacher residents from Siena, four of whom are now serving as year-long student teachers in various classrooms across the district. So we have one partnered with a physics teacher, one in middle school math, one middle school social studies, and one high school English. This program has been very successful so far. All the residents are doing great. They get paid the stipend of $30,000 by the district, and the district is reimbursed for the full cost of that stipend by the Department of Labor. The goal of this grant is to really expand the pipeline of the next generation of educators, both at Shen and across New York State. If a position is available at the end of the year, we welcome the interns to apply for that role, and we look forward to potentially interviewing them for an opening position. I'll turn it over to Vicky.
Thanks.
Good evening. So our Mentor Teacher Leadership Program Grant comes from New York State with a total budget of just over $51,000, which is the maximum that a district of our size can be awarded. And while that is an encumbrance for a single year, this grant actually runs in a five-year cycle. So assuming that it continues to be funded, we are approved through the end of the 28th school year, 27, 28 school year to receive that grant. You heard Mrs. McKenna mention mentoring with some of the other grants. This grant, we actually do not pay the stipends for the mentors. We use it mostly to cover the substitute costs because part of the grant requires that mentors and their interns take release days to work and plan together. Additionally, we provide through the Professional Learning Department full days of professional learning for those groups of teachers. So obviously, substitute costs could be quite a bit, and this grant covers that. It also covers professional development for our instructional coaches who do the majority of the facilitation of the PD, and they need to keep up on their own learning. And for the mentors and the new teachers, additionally, for books and equipment to enhance the program. We try to make sure that when there's new texts and new literature coming out, that will be useful to those new teachers, that we are actually providing them with those resources in addition to the PD, so that it's embedded and on code. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. So Mr. Davis will start us off?
Yes, I will, and then there will be a parade of folks coming behind me. So good evening again. I'm excited to kick off this year's summer programs presentation. So I don't supervise all of these programs, but I do supervise several of them, so I'll give a brief overview. And then I'm going to ask each presenter to introduce themselves, give you a few more details about their summer program, and then if there are any questions, I'll come back up at the end. So tonight, you're going to hear about all of the programs listed here. Summer literacy, summer math enrichment, summer ENL, 612 Summer School, ESY, Shen Summer Adventures, sixth-grade orientation, which is new this year. And we'll cap it off with an update from Vicky about curriculum development and professional development for teachers that took place this summer. So I just want to highlight a few things. So first, sixth-grade orientation was a brand-new program that the district started this summer. So this was open to all sixth graders from all three middle schools. And attendance was so good that we had more students arrive than actually signed up, which, you know, is always fun, so luckily, we were able to accommodate that. And Karen Simone, who could not be here tonight, did a phenomenal job in leading the planning of this program, executing it, and had a great team behind her, from the middle school administration to, I think we had something like 30 middle school staff members come on August 22nd for this program. This program really encompassed all aspects of the district. We provided transportation, we provided We provided transportation, we provided snacks to the students that day. They got a sneak peek into the tri building. They went on tours, they had races to see who could open a locker the fastest. They learned about their schedules, they learned about rights and expectations. And also, it was just an amazing opportunity for them to get to know their peers and their teachers and their counselors prior to the first day of school. And based on everything I've heard, the program was a great success. I know that Dr. Bolson Turner and myself and Mrs. McKenna were there to see the first day. I had my son with me, too, so John got to see it. And it was phenomenal. So we're very excited to think about what that program will look like going forward. And finally, we were able to sustain all of the summer programming that had initially been funded with federal grants for this summer due to some creative use of title grants and the district's general fund budget. This included offering free breakfast for all students in our academic summer programming, continuing our Jump Start ENL program for students who are new kindergarteners who are also English language learners, and we continued all of the other amazing programs that we've started over the last several years. So I'm going to turn things over now to Ms. Kathy Stranges, who was our Summer Literacy Program Coordinator this summer, and she's going to share some more about how that program went. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Stranges, as Matt said. It's the first time I was able to administer or lead the Summer Literacy Program. I thank you for that opportunity. And we were housed at Arrendt and Carrigan this year, with Arrendt serving as the homeschool for Summer Literacy and the Jump Start ENL program classrooms, and then Carrigan housing the ENL summer program. Summer Literacy was built with 34 teachers this year, 47 new-to-school, soon-to-be kindergartners at the time, which is very much like herding cats, but it's wonderful, and about 272 grade one through five students. And this was pretty much in line with the numbers we have seen in the past. The program for the elementary students was implemented to support continued reading development during the summer break, mitigating that concept of summer slide and fostering a love of reading in a continuous way that makes summer fun and exciting. The program provides targeted instruction, engaging activities, and access to diverse reading materials. So additionally, early numeracy and number sense is stressed at each grade level, along with being a writer and leading a writer life. Some positive attributes of that Summer Literacy Program continue. So improved maintained reading skills, assessment data is collected and used during screening for our Jump Start students to access the criteria, to see if they qualify in that way, and then each grade level has benchmarks, and we use those benchmarks from our MTSS plan to decide who then goes and gets the invitation, and from there, we continue to invite, invite, and invite as many as we can. Engagement and motivation is always a consideration, especially in the summer. We want families to be excited to bring their little ones, and we want little ones to be excited to come and learn. Support for families is included. There are some take-home materials that are offered to empowered families to support this literacy at home, and certainly, our qualified and dedicated staff are there. They're well-trained, they use evidence-based strategies both in literacy and math. Their commitment and experience continue to support and enrich the learning environment. And as you know, one of our district goals is a positive social-emotional environment, and so if you could see everyone outside the bus port in the morning greeting and encouraging the children, very happy that they are there, that was our number-one goal, to make sure that we develop those relationships. It really is something out of our Dr. Seuss film. You're popping out of school for 16 days, right? So you're moving into a building, start to finish, buses, food, teachers, materials, everything, for 16 fabulous days. And so the energy is high and it needs to be, and I appreciate everyone for bringing their best game. So in conclusion, the Summer Literacy Program successfully supports elementary students in maintaining and advancing their literacy skills during the summer months, and the positive outcomes affirm the value of continued investment in such summer learning initiatives to continue to promote academic achievement and lifelong literacy. And as a proud tradition, all of our Jump Start students were the recipients of this wonderful book, All Are Welcome. It was read to them before they left, and certainly, we carried that goodwill into the summer, into the school season. So, thank you.
Not that tall. Good evening. My name's Emily Patterson. I am the Instructional Literacy Coach for K-5. However, I did some math work this summer. Good evening. This summer, math was anything but worksheets and drills. In our Math Enrichment Program, more than 120 students in grades one through five explored math through play, movement, and curiosity. I like to call it math in motion. Students visualized, built, and investigated mathematical ideas in creative ways, just like you can see in some of the photos on the slide. We also had 82 students in our Math Bridge Program preparing to accelerate into advanced math. The focus for them was simple: close the gaps before they open. Teachers worked on key concepts students needed so that they could begin the year confident and ready with a full grade level acceleration. Across both programs, we saw students grow as thinkers and problem solvers. They explained their reasoning, took risks, and most importantly, had fun with math. It was wonderful to hear students say things like, "That was so fun," or "I don't want to leave yet." That excitement is what we hope students carry forward as they begin the new school year. Any questions?
Is it also a three-week program?
It was three weeks this year. But each week was a different group of students.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so it was a single week. Say that again?
For both programs?
Both programs.
I had a question about just how students are identified, like especially for the Bridge program.
So the Bridge program, they go through several assessments throughout the spring, and that's led by Gina Bolson, the Academic Administrator, and then they qualify for that advancement, and then because of that, they are entered into the summer program.
That's great.
Yeah. Is that new?
No, it's all of our accelerated math students who accelerated in math for grade four and grade five at the elementary level. And so in, with ARC, we designed a program to create a bridge for those students so that they're not just skipping a whole year of math without any additional context or support, and so those families who are able to send their students to participate are able to get some of that instruction that they would have missed in fourth grade because they're going to sit in fifth grade math, so that they're best prepared to be able to do that.
So is the Bridge program new, or is it?
It was new with ARC funds probably two years ago.
Yeah, because when I started here at Shen, that didn't exist. And those kids just got thrown in. So it's an uncovering day. And there was plenty of interest in both programs. If you want to expand, there is room. I think we had 120 or 180 people on the waitlist for the enrichment program.
Oh, wow.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Sweet's coming up?
Hello. Welcome. Testing. Hi, my name is Adam Sweet. I'm a former student at Shen, and I'm a teacher when I was a student here in the 1900s. There was no ENL departments. There were ENL students, we just didn't really recognize them as such at the time. So I'm very pleased to be here in front of you, a 20-year veteran of the ENL departments, and thank you so much. Our district strives to provide an equitable education for all students. That is a wonderful goal, and I'm so happy Shen does this. To do this, we need to keep in mind that all teachers are teachers of English language learners, and all staff support English language learners, and the summer program is a great example of this. The summer program, we supported 92 elementary students, 27 secondary-level students, 12 Jump Start ENL summer students. We do support all four modalities of listening, speaking, reading, and writing, but we do focus mainly on reading, writing, and vocabulary development. But a benefit of the program I've seen over the last couple of years has been preparing students for the transition to their new classes in September. And this is a wonderful benefit of our program. The Jump Start program is a great example of how, for our pre-K ENL students, this is the first time many of them have been in a classroom. This is the first time that they've learned the classroom culture, they've learned the routines, and so when they go to school in September, they are better prepared to have a successful year. We are also supporting at the elementary level preparation for them contributing to their discussions in the Wit and Wisdom Reading Series that they're going to encounter in grades one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five. We can build background knowledge during the summer so that when they're in the class in September, they have more to add. I want to go back to the idea that all staff and all teachers are supporting RLs. I work very closely with Kathleen Stranges, with Jennifer Lee Alden, because we are a team, and without the collaboration of all of the support staff, we could not have this program. This includes transportation, this includes Matt Davis. I'm going to say that again, this includes Matt Davis. I'm so happy to work with him. So please keep in mind that when I talk about RLs, I'm talking about a whole collaborative group effort to support them. And those were my main points. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There we go, fine size. Good morning. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Lee Alden, and I would like to recognize, there she is. I was very pleased to have Lisa Farrell joining us in our Summer School 6 through 12 program again this year. As you can see on the slide, our big focus is on building opportunities for students in grades six through 12. This is sometimes a challenge because the students are not with each other during the regular year. So for the fourth year, I believe, we have started with an orientation day, just in the morning, a little presentation so that we're all on the same page with what we hope to achieve and also what the students can expect and what the teachers can expect. The slide on the far right, I know it looks tiny now, but I'm assuming you did get a chance to see it. We play in the sandbox in summer school 6 through 12 sometimes, so in March, April, May, when we were talking about the cellphone policy, I made the mistake and said, "Hey, Becky, what are we doing for the cellphone policy?" And she said, "Hey, Jen, what are you going to pilot for the cellphone policy?" So we did present that to students, and it did go very well, made us cautiously optimistic that it wasn't going to be as big and bad as everybody said, and I hope if you've done some check-ins, it's actually going along pretty well. So that's how we started. Going to the next slide, if you take a look, there's all the data that we like to share. If you take a look at the number of students, that 730, that was huge for us this year, and that includes students that are in our Arts Enrichment Programs. Thank you for offering those non-credit opportunities for kids to express music and art, and I don't just say that because I'm, it's those opportunities. We often think about students going to summer school as the ones that need more time to show their mastery of the content, but to offer the Arts Enrichment Programs, to offer the initial credit courses that we offer in economics and in health and in pre-calculus, that is really opening the doors for a lot of our students because it gets some of those classes done ahead of time. But that big number of 731, the reason we had those numbers so large is we had those three new Regents exams, and so we had students that were seeing some of those, not only for the first time as ninth graders, but maybe they were older students seeing some of those for the first time, and they kind of cranked them up a little bit. So we did increase the number of students taking Regents exams. We registered over 500, we had 393 STEM, and you can see that we were pretty successful where we are. A thank you to Katie Headwell, I didn't see her in the house tonight, but in talking about the free breakfast and lunch being served to all students, we knew that was going to happen for the following year, but a big thank you to Katie because she did do that extra, little extra paperwork to make it so we could do that for students. And if you look at those numbers, look at the number of kids and the, well over 1,000, you know, that were participating in our breakfast and our lunch program because it was offered to them. And I think I hit that all. Hey, it did pretty well. Thank you so much, and thank you for supporting our programs. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tamara Dorsey. I'm the Academic Administrator here at Special Education, and today I have with us community Olivia Grant and Emma Paradise. So I will say, it takes a village to raise a child, and we definitely had an increase in our village. We're very happy to have both Emma and Olivia serve as assistant principals with us while they're doing their internship. We're going to talk a little bit about special education and our ESY program. So it's a six-week program, and we have a half-day program that's two and a half hours as well as a 5.5-hour program. And with our staffing, we had myself, our two assistant principals, two psychologists, three nurses, one secretary, seven speech providers, and we also had routine PT providers. This year, we offered our program both at the Skene Elementary School and High School West, with Skene being where our primary elementary students were being housed at, and High School West was our secondary. One of the other things that we want to talk about as well is our total number of students. So there was 225 students that were recommended, 182 students attended. We had over 24 teachers that were working with us this summer and 62 babies. We also had some one-to-one aides that were included. I also wanted to also say that we had our Community Skills Development Program join us as well. They were able to go out to their work sites and come back to our building as a home base. And I also just want to also thank all those that were instrumental in our program. We want to thank Matthew Davis, our High School West partnership, as well as Jill Florio, who allowed us to also be in her building at Skene. Also Katie Headwell for our lunch, Barb Salker in Transportation, and Rebecca Carlin. And now I'm going to turn it over to Olivia and him to talk a little bit about our program.
Hello, everyone. My name is Olivia Grant. I'm currently a first-grade teacher and an administrative intern, and had the pleasure of being one of the assistant principals this summer. So our Extended School Year program ran for six weeks, and this summer, we introduced an exciting theme called Summer Coaster Quest. Our goal was to make learning meaningful, memorable, and fun for our students while continuing to target their academic, social, and functional IEP goals. This theme was selected in conjunction with our summer curriculum from our unique program.
Good evening. My name is Emma Paradise. I'm currently a fifth-grade teacher at TESAGO, and I'm also doing my administrative internship. So you can see in the pictures here, students had a lot of fun during the activities that we planned this summer. They engaged in a variety of amusement park-inspired activities that connected directly to classroom instruction. This theme helped us sustain academic growth while also promoting engagement within the classroom. Teachers of the program were able to come down to our office to grab materials for certain projects. As you can see in the photo, students were highly involved and proud of their work. We were also able to go on a field trip to spare time and have Mr. Twisty come in. Overall, our Summer Coaster Quest theme really elevated the learning experience and helped make this year's ESY program both educational and exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to talk briefly about the summer programs that we offer in regards to the summer camps. As you can see, we have five different summer camps that we offer. Each year, we increase the number of participants that we're able to offer the different camps to, and that in part has been because of a great partnership that we have with the Educational Foundation and seeking some scholarship funds, which I believe we had 13 total this year for camp, C Camp and Musical Theater also access some scholarships as well. And you can see there from the statistics that because of this, we've had, I think it's a 233% increase in support, which is huge. We have waitlists many times for these camps. They're released in March, and I think they're full within two to three days, most of them. So. I was trying to make it, you know. But that's a great problem to have, but we always, you know, one of the things that I want to leave you with is we are constantly looking at, how do we reimagine? How do we potentially look at offering more? What does it look like? And so we have great individuals that are running these camps that are very open to trying different things, so that's why we've been very successful, you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Becky, that, you know, I think these camps are just tremendous. They're so innovative, the things that they're doing, and they're so engaging to students, you know? A lot of times, students don't, you know, especially younger ones, it's like, I have to go to camp again. But, I mean, people, the kids want to go to these camps. They're just fantastic, so.
And they're actually learning while they're there, which is awesome. But they may not know that, but we're trying to teach them some fundamental skills.
You know, the camp counselors and the people who are running the individual sessions are so dedicated, and they just are trying to make it such a fantastic, engaging experience. So, you know, they're just great.
All of them four through eighth grade?
They're different grade levels. So we expanded Musical Theater Camp last year, the year before we expanded. So we have more kids of higher level also in those programs. And then we have elementary students who are coming into the middle school for C camp, Camp Little Shen, and Camp Benvention is for the younger ones. Thank you. We're good to go. So Matt, give you an update on sixth-grade orientation. And now we'll have Ms. Wells.
I keep being the tail end of the meeting. So this past summer, we had lots of curriculum work going on from our faculty and all of our content areas were represented during that work over the course of the summer. I really wanted to highlight on the right-hand side there, our Library and Media Specialist worked on media literacy. We had worked on Typing Club, which you may remember having heard about as a pilot last year. And then some of our new courses that have come through IPAC, Business Leadership and Management and Foundations in Geometry. Those teachers working really hard to make sure that they have curriculum up and running and ready to go for students in the fall. Additionally, we had quite a bit of professional learning to offer, not only from the professional learning team and our instructional coaches, including Mrs. Patterson, but also we always have faculty instructors who step up. And I'm going to thank Bree, who's here in the audience, who is always willing to give up her time during the summer and participate in providing PD for her colleagues. And that's a piece of feedback that we get so often through our Professional Learning Committee is how much faculty appreciates hearing from their colleagues. And so there's just some examples there. I want to point out Canva 101, 201, and 301. We are up to Canva 301 and still filling Canva 101 courses. And Magic School, obviously, you've heard a lot about that being our AI platform for both teachers and students. And a couple of book studies. So The Writing Revolution is mentioned there, but Dr. Wilson Turner, if you don't mind going, this is just one of the advertisements that went out for Summer Academy showing the different book studies that would be going on. Additionally, if you continue scrolling down, if you've been sitting at the board table, you've heard me mention the PD Palooza. We had our third annual PD Palooza this year, which is just so exciting. It continues to grow. And on the next slide, you can see one of the reasons why it continues to grow and its enrollment continues to grow is because in a single day, faculty members can come and they can get four different sessions of PD, choose what is most valuable to them, and it's also a lot of fun. So I believe the next one or two, there we go. You will see that not only do we have great sessions running where they learn a lot, but our team works really, really hard to solicit prizes from local community businesses. And we get great prizes for every session they attend. They get a raffle prize and at the end of the day, we all gather giveaway prizes and it's just a really fun way to end the summer. Thank you.
So that concludes our summer program presentation. It's a busy place in the summer. Almost every building is used in some way, shape, or form. So huge shout-out to all of the teachers, support staff, administrators who come in to make that happen. And we are already hard at work planning for Summer '25, '26. We had our first summer location planning meeting last week. So it's hard to believe, but the work is already begun. Thank you so much. Do you have any final questions?
Great job. Thanks for everybody's time tonight and appreciate every, it's just incredible the work that we're doing. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to ask everyone to bear with me and my technical skills. I did practice, rated training, Max my backup. Because our next presentation is virtual. We will be joined by John McGuire, Michael Niemann, and sorry, they have one other partner who will be on the call to do a presentation of our Special Education Program Review. As many of you will remember, because many of you are participants, that occurred over the course of the spring, pretty much over the course of March and into April, where they'll go through the numbers of people that they actually sat down and had individual conversations with, the amount of data that they were able to review, to really paint a comprehensive picture of where we are as a district with our special education programming. Both what we are doing really well and need to make sure that we sustain and continue, and the opportunities that we have to make revisions and improvements and see opportunities for continued growth. And so we are very excited to present to you tonight a preliminary overview of the findings of that report as well as the process. And I've outlined for staff internally what our process will be going forward in order to bring this information to our staff. And so they have some opportunity to have some interaction with myself, potentially Ms. McKenna and Ms. Hazelton around the report and the information that is in there. So we hope everyone is able to view both tonight. And again, when we come together over the course of the next week or so to ensure that we have an understanding of what our work can be coming forward. And then we'll have an opportunity to have stakeholder groups that will begin to navigate what are some potential recommendations that we would like to move forward as a district. And I'm going to say this as many times as I possibly can. Where there are opportunities for growth and improvement, we will take a very measured approach, I think that's a familiar phrase in these parts, so that we are not going to be able to fix anything overnight. Some things we'll be able to fix more quickly than others. But we will do it with an intentionality and with a real strategic approach to how we can begin to make the shifts that we know we need to make that support special education program both for our students and our staff. So remember, some things will be short-term, some things will be long-term, but all things will be considered and discussed so that we are able to continue to move forward in a productive way. And so hopefully, now, I can make this happen. So John, Michael, and Richard, you can see the presentation? Oh, and I have you. Can you all hear me?
Matt, your practice missed.
Can you all hear me?
Okay.
Can you talk so we can see, we can hear you?
Okay, can you try to say something?
Wait, why didn't you use the remote earlier? I only muted them on my computer when I was talking to them earlier. Well, I have my screen, I have a digital. So my go-to is going to be open. Have you tried playing like another video or anything else as a sound play? Good evening. So we'll try one more thing and then we'll. I'm going to open, I closed, so I'm going to open back up.
You can put Gus's microphone on.
That's not a bad idea.
We've done it. Put that monitor way up there.
I don't want to.
I think you have to mute that one so that you can hear that one.
Okay, I'm going to unmute here and see. Okay, one more time, please.
You all heard them before I started the meeting. As my witness, you saw I did it right the first time, right?
Okay, hang on. So we've got audio, we have audio on my computer right now. And it should be picked up by the microphone. Okay, can you guys just start introducing yourselves and see if we can hear you?
And I'm John McGuire. And I'm Rich LeBrie.
Okay. May I just?
So they can't hear me. But you can let them know we're going to go with any of the started. Can you hear me okay?
Can you?
Very good. All right, so John, would you please introduce your team members?
John, can you introduce your team members?
Yes, I'm John McGuire. Dr. Michael Niemann is our Managing Director. And Rich LeBrie, Richard LeBrie is going to be talking to you tonight about the financial components of the analysis.
We will turn it over to you.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to you to get started.
So if I did interject, this slide will be helpful in how that will be presented to all of you. So, good evening, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to present the findings of the high-level results of our study. And the purpose is to, because of the methodology of the study today is the superintendent said, we really want to share with you our approach, we're going to do important work. So people who know how we write that then, like instructions, present pertinent information for intellectual purposes as we go through the study, provide key findings, and corresponding areas of opportunity or recommendations, and provide forum for discussion and you left the slide for any questions or discussion for my hat, but, you know, we love any type of questions or discussion that we might not be able to see or hear. So if somebody could indicate for us there's a question from the board, we appreciate that. Next slide, please. So what we might have been, enter the agreement with the district, the areas that we thought had the most salience to really capture focus celebrations and areas of opportunity for the district's program, with spoken unit services, utilization of parent professional supports, added district placements, and again, roll forward, that's a roll celebration from our perspective that is probably continuum. But the district's still a wonderful job keeping students within the district. But we did a lot of it as part of the continuum of services, which is number four. Organizational structure, district coordination of those programs. So basically the balance of what's happening at the local and school level and what's happening in central office. And Mr. LeBrie will be talking about number six at the end of the presentation, which can do finances, came to efficiencies in Medicaid, recruitment, and transportation. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. The presentation had really followed the organization of the board, the relentless areas. They really follow nicely into organizational considerations, since like professional development, culture and climate, we don't look at staffing, we don't look at different frameworks, spending costs. Those were what we considered organizational considerations. And then the continuum of support between the RTI and ESS, specialized education programs, indicators like graduation rates, student achievement. And we discussed each of those areas with respect to findings and areas of opportunity. And again, as I mentioned before the last part, Richard talked about his summary of Medicaid and transportation. So I'm going to have Mr. McGuire talk about the first part, findings and children under cultural climate.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to just start by saying thank you to the board and administration, for the opportunity to partner with the district. And if you'll forgive a personal note, I was particularly excited about this partnership because many years ago, early in my administrative career, I served as Director of Special Programs at Shenandoah for five years. So it was kind of a homecoming for me. We start with climate and culture because we believe that in a typical intensive enterprise like education, culture is the essential variable in everything we do. So first of our findings, we look at what responsibility and stewardship for students with disabilities. Essentially, what we asked interviewees is to what extent do all of the adults in the school, faculty and staff, see students with disabilities as their students? And perceptions of respondents in our study gave pretty high ratings, ranging from 10 to 100% of colleagues showing evidence of responsibility and stewardship for students with disabilities. But the vast majority fell within the 60 to 90% range. Indications were that some schools were higher than others, as were individuals variable across the interviews, but that general educators who had collaborated with special ed colleagues in serving students with disabilities tended to evidence very high levels of stewardship for students with disabilities. Also, there was some indication that in individual instances, stewardship may have been higher with respect to students with milder disabilities. Some variability, parent participants in the study gave relatively high ratings regarding inclusion and acceptance of their students in the schools.
John, I'm sorry, John, could we go to the previous slide, the one for the talks about the methodology that we might have been skipped over? Here we go. What you think was important is the superintendent said about the amount of people we spoke to, it was 151, crowd for interviews, this is part of the school-based interviews. The digital technical school, he spends half-day each school with a ranked number of stakeholders. We know this is a very transparent process where a number of people were invited to be part of that process, including parents of students with disabilities. So we just wanted to make sure that we talked about that number, 151. Those are a very good number that people really had their voices heard. And those interviews, you know, were really catered to the expertise of people we were speaking to with some commonalities like culture and climate, which John had talked about. Also talked about some of the quantitative data. Also talked about some of the, um, quantitative data when we get to the first graphs. But again, we just wanted to make sure that people understood that, and, and all the effort that went into district leadership to make those interviews happen. We were very grateful.
Thank you, Michael. Um, inclusionary practices we find relate, uh, pretty well to the idea of that stewardship issue that we were addressing. Um, given more opportunities, uh, as you may know, uh, school districts report to the state education department annually. On the percentage of identified students with disabilities who spend at least eighty percent of their day in general education settings. And on that variable, Shenandoah, uh, did very well with a seventy-one point eight percent, uh, rating of participation in over eighty percent of their day in inclusive settings. And that had increased nearly seven percent over the last three years, uh, as compared with a decrease in analogous schools of one percent over the same time period. And we always look for celebrations in our work as well as opportunities for improvement. Uh, it is a celebration, uh, for sure, that, uh, the district had been above state targets in terms of these inclusionary measures over the last reported five years. Next slide, please.
Yes, and I'll, I'll just kind of, uh, reiterate what I was saying. We talked about sort of the data rich combined analysis. We trialed the qualitative data like interviews with quantitative data, um, got a lot of really good data points. Um, hopefully the board can see, um, what we call the analogous regional school districts. Uh, you know, what the district considers to be white districts within the capital region. Those would be Bethlehem, those are in North Colony, conservative, um, city. Um, and then, uh, we think it's important to point out whenever you see averages, we factored out, um, Shen from that. So the ARS, the average, not A's looking at whose district environment, that is, is factoring out Shen, that would just include those analogous school districts. So John said you can see that, the little celebration, uh, on the left is, uh, the increase in inclusionary education for students with disabilities. So again, um, this is a lot like about this district. This is the first of many celebrations that we've had to talk about tonight.
Next slide, please. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we talked about areas of opportunity in our work, uh, more than really recommendations. We don't think our role to tell our partners what to do, but we offer up room for thought, if you will. Um, in furtherance, or building on the foundation of positive cultural variables that we encountered. Uh, we would suggest the district may consider, uh, developing professional learning communities that are integration, that, that evidence integration of both special educators and regular educators. And include training for principals. And to enhance education for all and engagement with parents and guardians, that building principal take the lead role in hosting SEPSA meetings at building-based sites, uh, across the district. Next slide, please. Um, celebrations around the CSE processes. In our findings, overall, the processes and procedures guiding the CSE were generally in place. And in most cases involving reductions in services or discontinuations in services. Um, those meetings were characterized as celebratory in nature. And the reason we think that's important is because that's an, an indicator that faculty and staff are doing a good job of building positive relationships of trust with families. So that they are comfortable in knowing that when we reduce a service, it's because their child has evidenced, uh, uh, progress and no longer needs that service. Uh, it's not that we're taking something away. Next slide, please. Additional findings and recommendations that included some challenges. There was an inconsistent awareness regarding eligibility and exit guidelines for various services. And while those may exist, uh, it, it's only, uh, it's only valuable if people are aware of and using them on a consistent basis. A need for communication improvement around transitions. And one example was from preschool special education to school age, uh, special education. Um, for your information, that is a common challenge in many of the three hundred plus districts with which we have partnered. Areas of opportunity around the CSE process, revisit the establishment of descriptions of the program options along your continuum of services. Um, even though they may exist, they have a tendency to change over time as student populations change and the needs of those students. Continue to develop and refine clearly articulated written program descriptions and eligibility and exit guidelines. For not only instructional special education programs, but also related services, parent professional supports, testing accommodations. Uh, explore increasing school-based administrative capacity to allow the special education administration at the district level. To focus on more global programmatic enhancements. Um, the greater, to the greater degree that we can empower and enable building-level administrators to support and lead special education in their respective schools. We can free up more time at the district level to deal with program development, um, quality assurance and support. Speaking of staff support, our findings were there was an expressed appreciation among those interviewed for the district's existing support to professional development. Followed immediately by a desire for more, more of the same, um, on current and emerging, uh, themes. It was noted that the district provides adequate instructional resources to enable teachers, for example, to engage effectively in the teaching and learning process. The district administrative structure for administration of special education, uh, was, was assessed in terms of a ratio. Uh, you have one administrator for every two hundred and twenty-four identified students with disabilities, which falls well within our range of expectations for a district of your size. Areas of opportunity around staff support, again, fall in primary areas of professional development on current and emerging best practices. Development of professional learning communities and, um, focusing on such current emerging prac, uh, practice areas as dealing with social and emotional needs of learners. And other emerging topics as your population demographic changes. Michael, the next slide?
Yes, so we also looked at, at staffing ratios. Um, we've got a really nice database for our work in New York, um, not just averages, but standard deviations. So we know, you know, which, um, which, uh, ranges are typical. You can see, looking at these special ed teachers, parent educators, SLP staff, psychologists, behavioral providers. And those, the key, um, on the left, you can see there are different characters. It's because there's different ratios. So, um, if staff or C-10s are, um, students on district placements or in, um, you know, peripheral schools or CPSC. We take those note counts. That's why the, uh, ratios look different in terms of the calculations. But that allows us to do an apples-to-apples comparison. You can see the interpretation in the right-hand column. Every single staff is within expectation except behavioral health, which, um, comprised the thirty-five counselors, eighteen school psychologists, two social workers and two behaviors. That actually is generally staff, but that actually is not that thing, especially nowadays with, you know, students with social emotional learning needs. Um, the district, again, we've mentioned before, is doing a very commendable job keeping students within the district. Many of those students have behavioral challenges. So we would see that as an investment and not something that, um, you know, should be an area of concern, but actually, you know, that, that is another celebration. The district can really meet the needs of students with social, emotional, behavioral, um, needs.
Some areas of opportunity related to staffing, um, as is already in progress in the district. We would encourage the district to continue to revisit systemic, district-wide entry and exit criteria for the related services. Um, specific to teacher aides, the district may want to consider quantitative parameters for eligibility for that support. In this manner, further parity and equalization of access to services can be for, for students across the district. And before we go to the next slide, I'd just like to, to, to elaborate a little bit on that. One of the reasons you hear us, uh, focusing on guidelines for eligibility for services is that you're a large district. You've got multiple, uh, CSE chairs, for example, chairing meetings with diverse, uh, stakeholders at the table. Um, the people we met were consistently very student-centered, and so this is not a disparagement of them. But even with the most child-centered people around the table across differing meetings, in the absence of some guideline parameters. You are inevitably going to come out with differential outcomes for similar needs of students. Uh, and that's, that doesn't speak well to equity and it's not a position that the district wants to be in. Next slide, please.
So these paragraphs basically indicate, um, spending for special ed students. First graph shows just special education spending above and beyond per student cost. You can see how, um, Shen compares to the other districts. We did not include Bethlehem. Bethlehem seemed like an outlier. The just, the districts are going back to the new reporting system, how they, um, report the per student cost. Bethlehem seemed to us like a data point that wasn't quite, we weren't quite sure how to interpret it. It seemed like a real outlier. So just in the, um, interest of a true comparison, you'll not see Bethlehem in this, that slide or the next slide, please. And that slide on the green basically is a combination of the special ed expenditures plus the per student, per student spending. So you can, um, see the true cost per student, which is about forty-four thousand dollars per special ed student in the district. And that compares, again, continues to grow up, um, pretty much in the mid-range of the like districts.
The next slide, we start to address response to intervention or multi-tiered system of supports. Um, and it, it just, an introductory observation. We were asked to do an analysis of the special education-related services program. RTI and MTSSS are clearly defined as general education initiatives. The reason we broke these is because there is an inextricable link between MTSSS and referrals to special education. To the degree that MTSSS is well implemented and district-wide and consistently, uh, in place. Um, it can have a very positive impact in reducing unnecessary referrals to the committee on special education. By meeting the needs of struggling learners short of, uh, referring them for, uh, review as potentially disabled. Uh, it will also have an impact on reducing the number of false positives, if you will, where students are referred to the CSE. And ultimately after, um, the assessment process is completed, determining that they in fact do not qualify as students with disabilities. So our findings were that MTSSS is a work in progress at Shen. Um, which puts you in league with about ninety-nine percent of the schools with whom we have worked. Uh, generally, the plan for MTSSS was reported to be well-defined and clear, but not necess, not necessarily understood by all building-level stakeholders. Eligibility process, uh, processes for assessing supports was perceived as most clearly defined in English language arts and numeracy at the elementary level. Less so at the secondary level, other than in social emotional learning at the middle schools. Material resources for MTSSS as well as other instructional materials were reported as adequate. People have the tools to do their jobs. Additional findings, the district had adopted intervention compass for its student data management system. And, uh, intervention response record for its data meetings. Um, let me be clear, we have no proprietary interest in any particular, uh, student data management system. But we encourage and celebrate that you have adopted consistent district-wide student data management systems. Um, we have seen in our work on this, uh, very topic, uh, that these tools can make your systems much more effective for students. And much more efficient for the adults in, uh, in doing progress monitoring and providing effective intervention supports for students. From a quantitative perspective, there are a couple of data points that suggest that RTI, while it is still a work in progress, is in a better place than some interviewees' perceptions. The first one on the next page. Michael, why don't I let you just get that up and take it up?
Sure, no problem. So as John was saying, there's a couple of data points, um, that really speak to RTI and MTSSS being in a much better spot than I think some of the interviewees perceived. This first graph shows, um, the special education population across time. Um, the five-year change basically has stayed the same in the district compared to ARS, the average. So basically Shen is lower in the special ed population than the analogous regional school districts. And also this data go pretty much, um, the same for the special ed, um, population compared to a slight increase for those analogous school districts. So students, students are not being over-identified according to that metric. And the next slide, please. We think it's actually, um, a much more substantive way to look at the population. And this looks at not just the overall special ed population, but the constellation of disabilities. Typically, students with learning disabilities, OHI, SLI, speech language impairment. Those comprise the plurality or the, um, in, in totality, the majority of educational disabilities, not just within state, nationwide. So these are students what we would consider to be high-frequency, low-needs, um, students, that most of them are a grade level. Um, and the presumption is that with MTSSS RTI, those students could, their educational needs be met within genit with MTSSS RTI. So when we see that number that's lower, so the district has seventy-one percent of learning disability, OHI, SLI students as of spreading and collecting data. That is actually the lowest percentage we've seen in our many districts in New York. Again, suggests that students are not being over-identified and students, again, that might have more peculiar challenges than educational disabilities are being accompanied with genit. So a real, that's a wonderful statistic and a real celebration.
So some areas of opportunity related to RTI and MTSSS. Um, as part of the hiring process, the recruitment process for new teachers, uh, ensure that there's an understanding about their ownership of RTI and MTSSS. As a general education initiative. Um, in our work, we have found that there's, uh, occasional misunderstanding of MTSSS as a special education program, which in fact it is not. Uh, and so that's a foundational awareness that we want to be sure all hirees understand. Consider a reverse MTSSS process. What do we mean by that? Well, uh, MTSSS and RTI emerged as preventative measures related to CSE referrals. To meet the needs of struggling learners as an upfront process. What we mean by reversing it is, some bright person that we encountered in one of our partner districts early on, looked at this and said. Why wouldn't this be a good safety net for students who are being declassified and coming out of special education? Well, yes, of course, it makes all the sense in the world. Uh, so as you reach full implementation of your program, we urge you to consider that as a, a safety net for students who are being declassified. There may be greater opportunities with related services providers to support tier-one instruction systematically in the younger classrooms in areas such as communication. Finding gross motor skills and social emotional learning.
Can I ask a question?
In district special education programs. Our findings include that the district operates a substantial continuum of special education instructional programs, as I'm sure the board is aware. Um, one of the advantages of scale, a district large as Shenandoah, is that you have sufficient cohorts and size and resource to be able to build programs. That enables you to serve the vast majority of your students within the district, uh, which is a real plus. Another celebration. Despite the well-deserved pride in achieving this scale, um, there were, among the interviews, interviewers, some convergences around ways that they would like to see the continuum enhanced. And one of those ways is to enhance the efficacy of integrated co-teaching models district-wide. Uh, from our perspective, um, if integrated co-teaching is done faithfully and well. It is a variable for identified and non-identified students, but it's also professionally enhancing for the teachers involved. Another smoother, another is to ensure smoother transitions from school to school, um, basically at all levels, from preschool to school age, from elementary to middle and middle to high school. Next, Michael.
So there, um, we've mentioned some of the quantitative pieces of the study. There are, um, some real salient ideas and figures that we. that we think are particularly important. Some idea educators are more procedural in nature, like timelines, assessments. Not that those aren't important, but we feel some of the more substantive ones that speak to performance of students with disabilities are achievement, how many are achieving proficiency in ELA, and now you can see there how Shen compares to, mostly in the middle compared to the districts in terms of the number or the percentage of the students with disability cohort achieving proficiency in those two content areas. As well as, next slide, please. Looking at graduation rates. Again, you can see Shen in terms of the overall percentage of students with disabilities graduating longitudinally across time, you can see the five-year average. Shen on the left in the blue bar compares again somewhere in the middle of the analogous regional school districts. And then, next slide, please. We also looked at the, just like looking at achievement gaps. We don't see a lot of data looking at the graduation gap, but we think that's important to look at the number of students with disabilities graduating compared to the overall Gen Ed population. There you can see where Shen ranks against somewhere in the middle compared to the analogous regional school districts. We have, and John will talk about that. We have several, what we see is best practices based on our internal work and also research how to bolster those graduation rates.
So some areas of opportunity regarding in-district special education. Create a standardized process and timeline for your transitions. We recommend the creation of transition teams, or vertical articulation teams, where there is a meeting among sending school providers and receiving school providers to enhance awareness of the needs of the students being received in the transition. Expand collaborative teaching models, such as the integrated co-teaching model that I alluded to earlier, and including the utilization of related services providers. There are several suggestions, as Michael just said, in the full report regarding strategies, best practices to enhance graduation rates. Next slide, please. Out of district placements, the primary finding is that this district is doing extremely well in this regard. Almost without exception, the people we interviewed took great pride in the fact that the district strives to keep students within the district. And the numbers prove that out, that commitment. There were, as of June of this year, there were 38 students with disabilities placed in out-of-district programs that were non-parentally placed. This constitutes a 3.8% of the identified population, one of the lowest that we have seen in the 70-plus districts we partnered with in New York State. Areas of opportunity, keep doing it. Continue to monitor and assess capacities to serve students within the district, keeping in or bringing back students from out-of-district. Next slide, please, summary. Okay, there were lots of celebrations in our work here. And we really try to acknowledge the good work that's going on. There were many celebrations in the district. Some examples include your least restrictive environment data, that 80%, of the day in general ed, constellation of students with disabilities, including low-need, high-incidence populations, and personnel levels that are essentially within expectations. You invest in your special education program and that translates to better and more student services, both instructionally and in related services. Several areas of opportunity that leadership may consider for struggling and differently-abled learners and are included in corresponding components of the document. There are some organizational considerations. Revise the CSE process to be more inclusive of all stakeholders. Examine and revamp the referral process to be timely and effective. And prioritize and support communications with stakeholders, principals, faculty, staff, and parents. This is a special education department initiative. Expand the professional development options to reflect the needs of special education teachers and paraprofessionals. Provide effective supports to new special education, self-contained classroom teachers and paraprofessionals. Continue to maintain and enhance dissemination of the district's special education plan. You have currently a very substantial district plan for special education. We urge you to maintain that, revisit it, enhance the program descriptions and eligibility guidelines for all the reasons we talked about earlier. Programmatic considerations. Continue the development and evolution and implementation of your MTSS support service structure to address the needs of struggling learners short of special education. Develop the district plan where self-contained class options fully are described in terms of the range of students' needs being served. Special programs that are self-contained have a way of evolving on their own process-wise over time. So they were originally designed to serve a certain set of needs and yet the student needs change. We identify a new student. We see a slot available in that self-contained program. A placement is made. It may or may not be consistent. The needs of that student may not be consistent with the original intent of that program, which is fine. You're striving to meet student needs, but you want to be sure that the definition of the program, the description of the program remains accurate for the students being served. Review the district continuum of services with particular attention to ICT. Again, with big advocates for well-done integrated co-teaching. Consider a creation of transition processes at all levels, involving both the sending and receiving programs. I hope, I have to think you're tired of hearing me talk. I'm tired of hearing myself talk at this point. But thank you for your patience with us. We didn't want to minimize this, but we wanted to make it manageable within the time allotment. Rich, do you want to talk to folks about money?
Thank you, John. Do you have the next slide, please? I'll be brief because I want to leave time for questions. But with regard to Medicaid reimbursement, you can see that the district has made a tremendous stride to the improvement of their Medicaid billing program over the last several years. Matter of fact, you have about a 232% increase in Medicaid revenue over the last five years. And when we looked at the total potential Medicaid, next slide, please. We calculated that the total eligibility for Medicaid for all Medicaid-eligible students, for all Medicaid-eligible services was a little over $1 million. $1,18,151, to be exact. Because Medicaid revenue, and if you look at the previous slide again, transcends fiscal years. What that means is that you bill in one year, you don't get the money till the next year, especially with the annual cost settlement reports. The state is often very lax in terms of when they send those out. We use a three-year average as our benchmark for comparison of what the district should be receiving. And so based on our estimate, you have a difference of about $214,000. But this represents that you're receiving about 79% of the total Medicaid revenue for which you're eligible. And when you look at the report, you're going to see that there are some pots of money that are very, very small and may not be worth the effort, the time and the effort to try to get reversed for that. But certainly the commendation is that management should be commended for having pursued filing for all Medicaid-eligible services for all Medicaid-eligible students. Next slide. When we looked at transportation, we looked at both your specialized, special ed transportation, and we looked at regular transportation. With regard to your specialized metrics, you're using 47 buses, 67 routes. If I can call your attention to the highlighted number, 4.8, that's your average number of students per route. And if you look at districts of similar size and demographics, a special ed average student rate/ride ratio of 4.5 or more is considered to be efficient. Therefore, given the metrics, your program locations, your distances, your ride time, it's our opinion that your special ed transportation is as efficient as practical without involving excessive length of time on buses for special ed population. Next slide, please. We did the same analysis for your regular transportation. You're running 124 buses for 245 routes. If you look at the bottom line highlighted, your load capacity ratio is 79%. What that means is that you're using 79% of seats available on your buses overall for your regular transportation. And typically, anything over 73% to 74% is considered to be efficient by both industry standards and also by your Department of Education. And so I commend whoever's doing your routing and scheduling that they're very good in what they do. And those are the two major findings for the, for both reports. I would say that we did indicate that given the national shortage of CDL drivers, that you may want to consider looking at the number of bus driver positions, sub-driver, monitor position, all positions you have open with regard to being able to recruit and retain quality drivers. Other than the shortage of drivers in open positions, we did not find any major performance issues with regard to transportation in itself. So we concluded, based on what I said for both the previous two slides, that your transportation operation is both cost-effective and as efficient as possible under current circumstances and your school bell schedules. Any increase in ridership efficiency would come at a low cost of longer routes and greater student time on vans and buses, which you probably don't want. Again, I would like to thank both your district finance personnel, your special ed personnel, and especially your transportation personnel because when you go through these reports, you'll see that they're data-intensive and the staff worked diligently to answer the questions we had, not only with providing the data, but being able to explain to us why they were doing things in certain ways. Because it's important to understand not only what's being done, but why it's being done that way. And oftentimes, there are very good reasons to be doing things in a particular way. So I do want to acknowledge and my thanks to your staff for bearing with us when we were looking for specific data.
Before we hear your questions, I would just like to make a note of another celebration that's not indicated directly in the report. We had total cooperation with everyone we interfaced with at Shenandoah. That's a cultural piece that shouldn't be missed. And in large measure, that's a...
That's enough.
That's what I'm talking about.
It's the better design.
It's really only one.
Hang on.
We didn't have a question.
There you go back. You can tell where you did that.
Yeah.
Heather.
Thank you, Matt.
Oh, cool.
You missed all our compliments.
Most of the scores. It is a lie.
I ignore you.
In the sake of time, if you'd like, I can send my questions separately. But I was curious if we could have access to this report because this was a lot of information.
Oh, I think.
Yeah. Okay. So I would like to send my questions to you.
Thank you, Mary.
But I do have a question.
Can you hear us at all? I saved too personally.
I figured it out last time because they were muted.
Oh, they were muted.
Any other questions that don't need to be said?
If you might. Of course. After you've had a chance to review them, digest them, shoot you up questions after tonight, please feel free to reach out to us if there's something you don't understand or if, for whatever reason, you might have a question.
Same on the program side. If there's any questions, you know, we're getting to the end of the, you know, the scheduled session. So we're happy to answer questions on any components of our work.
We're going to send them in. We're going to, yes, thank you. We're going to compile all the questions and send them to you.
I hope we've been clear enough that that doesn't require a drill.
Only several. Thank you. Thank you, Josh, Michael.
And Richard for pulling this together and being able to present this information to us tonight and for spending the quality time that you did in our district to meet with all of our staff, some of our families, our leaders, to pull together a comprehensive report. It's much appreciated and we will definitely send you questions if it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Oh, is that Matt's computer?
Thank you, everybody that came tonight. Sarah, just so you know, you're between.
They don't want to date for 40 days.
We do still love data, Sarah.
I know, I know. I'll get y'all pins.
They usually give you a shout-out for the data.
They do. They're data-centered. So let's look at some more data.
In all seriousness, it is a pleasure to be here this evening. Before I jump in to provide an overview of key benchmarks, I just want to take one second to introduce and recognize one of the newest members of my office, Roland Rao, sitting right here, has joined us as our second district data specialist. He's been an extremely welcome addition to our team and you will see much of his work here tonight. So as we go through, you can see with the table of contents, there is a lot of slides in here. There's a lot of data in here. I am going to start by providing just a kind of general framework. This, I think, for some of you is not going to be new, right? We have talked about data before. We have talked about the ways in which we utilize data. And so you're going to hear me repeat some things tonight because they are themes throughout our system. If we go to the next slide, please. So we really, we start tonight with our Shen learning framework because it keeps our students at the center and consistently reminds us of our why. High achievement, positive environment, ready for life, college, career, and civic duty. All of the amazing opportunities that you heard about tonight, we always are constantly looking at the data and understanding what can we do better? What celebrations can we promote? And how do we continuously strive forward for continuous improvement and realizing opportunities? So this data is just one way So this data is just one way in which we're able to do that, reflect on all the teaching and learning experiences for students in the organization. And again, we use it to inform our decisions, to ensure that service fellows need, and that all students are truly able to meet their full potential. So again, we've we've talked numerous times, just go back up for me, just you're going faster than me. That's okay. We've talked numerous times about the ways we use this data, and these two visuals really just help to show us and illustrate the number one in the image on the left, the cyclical nature of data analysis, right? These constant cycles and the various components, environment, behavior, instruction, that we look at consistently. The image on the right then really shows us, this is our what we kind of refer to as our MTSS data funnel, right? How do we engage in these cycles and how do we ensure that stakeholders across our district are are doing this work? And so that's really what that that funnel image shows us there. We engage multiple stakeholders to make strategic decisions and and really get down to that target of realized opportunities for students. So within organizational culture and environment, we really need to understand our population of students. So we see here just some snippets from one of our visualizations that we have. We see the total enrollment for students up on the top there. So as of a few days ago, we were at 9,276. You can see the breakdown by grade, enrollment by school, you see a snapshot of our race, ethnicity breakdown, our English language learners. You'll see within there, there are the different program levels or statuses of our learners across the district, as well as then a breakdown on the right there of our students with disabilities. So it provides a little snapshot of our population. Moving forward, we look at average daily attendance and chronic absenteeism. So here we see across the district, across three years, starting with elementary in green, middle school in yellow, and high school in blue, the average daily attendance percentages for our students. That typically sits right around 90 to 94%. And then baked into the bottom portions there, you will see, and I do apologize, the numbers are a little bit hard to read, those are our chronic absenteeism numbers. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% of school. And so you've heard Matt mention earlier, Ms. Miklas has been doing tremendous work, working with our students who are experiencing chronic absenteeism and really has decreased those numbers for us. I should also note, these data slides are pulled to be to represent the first 30 days of the school year, so we're looking at kind of apples to apples comparisons, right? So these numbers are from within the first month of school over the past three school years. We move on to average daily attendance by grade level. This gives us a different snapshot here, a different way to look at this. We see typical decreases in some of those numbers as kids get a little bit older. Again, those are typical trends across across the nation, really. Moving on to parent portal. The parent portal really serves as a central hub of communication and information sharing between parents, guardians, and our schools. Within that portal, you can find grades, assessment scores, and much more. This year, for the first time in late August, we asked our parents to verify their demographic census information with us, verify and add new information through the portal. It was the first time that we had done that. It's been sent home for a while on paper. And so realizing that we needed to continue to push people to the portal, that we needed as many people on there as possible, we really started to be very intentional with some of that work. Our numbers are always very high, so you don't really see that improvement here. I just would like to give Ms. Strangus, I think she's left at this point, but Kathleen did a really wonderful job, really honing in on those numbers. And from April until today, she's seen a 5% increase in the number of parents who have gotten on. So our numbers are high, but we always are looking at who is not on the portal and how do we continue to get, you know, increased engagement in that way. So speaking of engagement, here we take a look at the percentage of students participating in clubs. Nice thing here is that this is trending upwards. We've really focused on pulling and looking at this data over the past few years and with that, then acting upon it. So you will see in the next slide, as you go forward, the number of clubs represented, you know, behind those the students within those clubs. Specifically at the middle school level, if you hone in there, you will see that across those years from 22, 23, all the way to 24, 25, the number of clubs and opportunities that we are presenting students with has greatly increased. And that, again, has been very intentional. And I always like to mention that it's not just about the kids who are engaged here, it's about who's not engaged also, right? So this tells us who's engaged and how do we increase that? It also provides us the opportunity to check in with those who perhaps aren't engaged and to understand and learn more about what they might be doing outside of school. We know that sports, obviously, is another basis of engagement, so here we just see a quick snapshot of engagement percentage of students that are engaged in sports from last year fall to this year. Those numbers stay relatively the same. Moving on to referrals, this slide shows us over the past three years, the number of referrals within the first month of school. Again, you see pretty good consistency here across the levels. Restorative practices is used across the district in many ways. Here we see the number of incidents on the left involving use of restorative practices. And then on the right, we see specific restorative practices or resolutions that have been used for disciplinary incidents, again, within the first month of school. So moving on to our school and classroom experience, at the elementary level, we jump into some state assessment data. So here we see proficiency levels by grade for the 2025 New York State ELA assessment. What you will see across all of these slides is increased proficiency, either by grade level or as an aggregate. When you look at these grade levels across, we have we see that 73% of our students on average are reaching proficiency on the New York State exam. Leads us to two questions, or really one, you know, one main question when we look at that is, those who are not reaching proficiency, what do they mean, right? And so that's work that flows right into our MTSS plan, and you'll see some STAR data later in relation to that. Here we see a five-year comparison, so not just looking at grade levels, but looking over time at how students have performed. There is really a lot to celebrate here. If we work our way from the left, where we see 2021 data all the way to 2025, we see that proficiency has increased up to 73% this year, and really, it's almost 10%. 2021 was a weird year. It was after COVID. Not all kids were taking the exam at that point, so it's here, so we have a five-year comparison. But really, if we look, when we got to kind of normal levels of attendance and participation and test taking, we see in those four years a 10% increase in proficiency levels for Math assessments, grades three through five, again, we see high levels of proficiency. Third grade, 85% of students proficient. Fourth grade, 82% of students proficient. Fifth grade, 78%. So an average across those grade levels of 82% proficiency for students in math. Again, we look at a five-year comparison, and also a lot to celebrate here as well. Over four years, here we see a 12% increase in proficiency. Looking at year-over-year comparison, here we see science. The slide, the bar chart furthest to the left was the old exam. In the 24-25 school year, we then had a new science exam that was administered, and so you see a little bit of fluctuation between those two. I think the the key piece here to mention is that from 2024 to 2025, we did see student proficiency increase by eight points, right? So we got some good learning from that first go-around, and we were able to implement it and see improvements from that. So again, even as we see proficient students increase across content areas and grade levels, we are always continuing to focus on accelerating all students. This is ongoing work within our MTSS plan, and so that really leads us to our universal screener, which we use as sort of a starting point for understanding student needs. Just as a little refresher, all students K through eight are assessed with STAR three times throughout the year. They take reading and they take math. As you can see by the title of this slide, STAR early literacy is what our youngest learners take. Kindergarten and first graders take that in the fall, as opposed to reading. It assesses more age-appropriate foundational skills, and numeracy math skills are encompassed within that, so you don't see kindergarten on the math side. This provides us a look at percentile ranking, which gives us a national norm ranking, so we understand how our students are performing across compared to all other students across the nation. And again, we see proficiency rates here, 87% for fifth grade, 86% for fourth, and 83rd for third. Moving on to start math, also see increased proficiency here as students, you know, advance in the grade level, so you see that green just kind of continue to grow and grow and grow. The more they're with us, the more they're in our system, the more we're able to really teach into and understand their needs. Again, we see that proficiency is growing. This is the slide that got me really excited because this is it's just like a continuation of this increase in percentages over time. So now that we have had our universal screener for four years, when we look at that screening, again, over the four years, we can see an 8% increase in proficiency levels. So we move now to academic intervention services, or AIS as we refer to it. Here you see the percentage of students receiving AIS for ELA, K through five. You will notice that our kindergarten line there is one color. The colors are broken up into tier two and tier three. Tier three is our most intensive service. We do not classify our kindergartners as tier two or tier three. They're an extended day kindergarten. That is what we refer to as our academic intervention service, and so we see here that there's about 18% of our kindergartners that are receiving that service. All other numbers sit just under 19%, 19 being the highest. We move on to math. Our academic intervention service numbers for math at each grade level for tier two and tier three are all below 10%. And if you've ever seen or know anything about the MTSS pyramid, you will know that tier two and tier three, research will say, typically is about 20% of your students in tier two or tier three. We see here 10%, right? So really, shows us a lot about our population and what we're doing and the needs of our kids. Moving on to school and classroom experience at the middle school level, continuing with New York State assessments, here we see a breakdown by grade, grade six, seven, and eight for the 2025 assessment. Again, we see proficiency levels continue to kind of increase here. Looking at the next slide, our five-year comparison, encompassing all grades over five years, you notice consistency across all of these. Here we have same snapshot but for math, proficiency levels here for the New York State assessments. Sixth grade, 78% proficient, seventh, 75, eighth grade, 85. So again, that steady increase over the grade levels. Moving to the five-year comparison for math, again, a nice trending of, you know, an increase in the blue and the green. We want those higher level proficiency ones to continue to increase, and we want, you know, those scoring twos and ones to decrease, and that's really the trend that you continue to see here over the years. Here we move to our New York State Science Assessment. This is a two-year comparison, again, because we had a new exam in 2024, so we're really just at this point looking at what's the comparison between those two. 2025, we had 80% kids who were proficient, so a 2% increase here. We jump back to STAR at the middle school level here. We look at our percentile rankings by grade level. Again, I mean, look at the green, right? Really high levels of proficiency here, 87% at sixth grade, 89% at seventh grade, and 89% in eighth grade as well. Similar for STAR math in the fall. Almost 90% proficiency across grade levels here. So that moves us to AIS, Academic Intervention Services at the middle school level. And so here you see for ELA, the number of students receiving those services, again, all under 10%. It's really what we want to see as kids move up grade levels. We want to know that the work we're doing at the younger levels, we are closing gaps, we are meeting needs there, and so as kids get up, we should see those numbers decrease, understanding that the need's always going to be there, right? But we want to see that it continues to maintain itself in that way. Same thing for math. Here you see numbers, tier two and tier three. I think one of the biggest things you see as we get to middle school here, too, is that it's hard to tell with colors and coding here, but the lighter blue is tier two, so that's our less intensive. So you see, again, as kids move up, we have less needs and less more intensive needs. So moving on to the high school, school and classroom experience, similar formats here where we're looking at five-year comparisons. Here we have, this is the English regions, there is only one English region, so it's just one that is encompassed within here. Majority of our students are consistently receiving five, fours, and threes, as you can see in the purple, green, and blue there, with a very, very small, minimal yellows and reds. From there, we move on to math regions comparisons. This is all math regions together, so it's Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, all combined, to give us a look at proficiency levels, and we see some slight variations over time with cohorts, as is typical. From there, we move on to the same view, science. So here we have a few different exams in one, Earth and Space Sciences, Life Science, Biology, Chemistry, and Physics. And as I'm sure you know, we've had some changes here as well, and they will continue to come as we kind of phase old exams out and bring new exams in. But again, you see some some really good proficiency levels here. And obviously, as we adjust to new exams, we see things slightly differently. Next, we go to social studies, four-year comparison. And again, similar trends with really high levels of proficiency over time, and as new exams are introduced, we see some differences in those last two columns. So just trying to kind of round out what the high school has, and this does not suffice for all of it, right? But obviously, we have regions courses, and we have students who perform very well within our regions courses. There's a lot more that happens at the high school, and so here's just a snapshot of 14 advanced placement courses that are offered for students, as well as 55 honors and college level courses, and just a brief breakdown of those. And as we continue to move forward with how we track and look at our data and how we present it to you, we really want to think forward about what are the other components around this CTE and and many, many more that we can continue to kind of put forward to celebrate successes, really, because there's a lot to celebrate there. And then the last slide here just shows us our graduation rate for this year, and just some other small fun facts, the grade point average range for that particular class, the national merit scholarships that were offered, and then college plans for that group. So we saw that 19% of the 2025 class went on to two-year colleges, while 64% went on to four-year colleges. That is it.
Need to overlap those last two presentations.
So before Sarah leaves, I do want to say thank you to Sarah and her team, because we really have tried to evolve the data dashboard presentation to be really clearly connected to. You saw Sarah outlined it in terms of organizational culture and school and classroom practices, and she's been a dog with a bone with, if we're going to have KPIs tied to our goals that we present to you in February, our data dashboard should be built in accordance with that, so that we're presenting data that is aligned with our organizational goals, with the work that we're actually doing at the district building level, and are measuring it in the same way consistently over time. And so I appreciate Sarah and the team for really refining the data dashboard presentation to capture those things and to organize data in that particular way. We can show you thousands of slides of data, right? And so really, being thoughtful and intentional about what data is put in front of you is is really a lot of work, right? Really being able to curate which one is really important. And so I thank her team for that. And I want to emphasize what Sarah said about the shifts in regions exams. And what I want to emphasize is those numbers, despite the shifts in exams, despite the shifts in standards, didn't shift dramatically from year to year. And that is a testament to the work of our academic administrators and our teachers who spend their time in summer professional learning and summer curriculum writing, really in professional learning days, really thinking about how the curriculum is shifting, how they shift that curriculum for our students to ensure that they are prepared for what is to come. And so with the English exam in particular, Kathy Sharon noticed that they're starting to introduce the questions that are coming for the new English exam, will start to test some of those out, and so that will then impact in how students are performing. But again, not these seismic shifts because of the work that they are really doing. So we have a lot of people working in the background to ensure that the data looks that way, and then we have Sarah and her team who are pulling it together in ways that they can use it on a regular basis, right? So she's not building a dashboard just to show you guys for tonight. She's building dashboards at their request all the time to ensure that they have access to the data that they need, so that we can continue to inform our instructional practice. So thank you.
Sarah, I think this was really helpful, and the only reason why I said they could overlap is that some of the the data points that you shared did support some of the messaging that came through the earlier presentation. And so I thought that was really helpful. It also explains a little more of the why, where you see it here, you don't like know, and then you hear what their experience was or when they actually looked at. I know it was a set amount of time, but it but it does give us some insight into those numbers. That's what I meant by my comment. Thank you.
I know, we all know you, but I did want to point out, Sarah, you did a great job. You have to come back. But I was really excited to see, like, we really popped off the page, like, how well we're doing mathematics, right? Like, it's very, very clear that we're assisting children at every level, and then it's like the proficiency just keeps going. And I think English is just, I mean, it's a little wonky, and you're right with cohorts, but math is just so obvious that whatever we're doing with STAR and then interventions, it's absolutely working. So thank you.
If you would like to tell Carrie Coverley she can retire now.
No, she can't retire.
So since you've waited all evening through all of our wonderful presentations, we announce we now are going to close with Ms. Brooke Lashin, who's going to present to you, along with my brief introduction, the new district website. So I'm just going to provide a brief overview. As you see with every presentation that you receive as a Board of Education, everything has been connected to our district vision, vision, and goals, and this is no exception, as was each presentation this evening. And so we actualize our mission in the things that you see presented this evening. And there is no better way to tell our story than to be able to have a district website that represents what we are trying to achieve in our system at all times. And so we remain future-present as we have taken steps along the way to make sure we have what we need in place. And so again, in alignment with our goals, we can check the box on every single one. It's going to contribute to organizational culture. It's going to house information for school and classroom experiences. It's going to support resources that our personnel and professionals need to access. And we are able to leverage it to be consistently responsible to present information to both our community and our public in a consistent manner. So you received a presentation probably almost a year ago about why the website was. We decided to, as we chose the website that we would go with. And so really, there was three key areas. We needed ease of navigation, largely about being able to easily find information and to search for information at your fingertips for both our staff, our families, and our community to ensure that it is in compliance with ADN and to ensure that we can keep it updated and posted in efficient ways. Because this happens not just from the communications office, but at each of our buildings and our departments who have access to continue to update information. And so it has some key features. We love the design and the brightness and the images that you'll be able to see as it comes through. A big feature that we looked at was it being mobile-friendly. So it converts when it's on your phone into a format that you're able to use in an efficient way. We'll be able to incorporate both videos and graphics when you land on pages. Ease of use for scheduling, as we mentioned before. Calendar and directory are big tools that we use in our system. And being able to accurately and quickly update, those are important. And we were looking at it being compatible with social media and our school, our student information system. And so just a brief reminder of the timeline. You started this conversation back in 2022, 2023 with the survey of both parents and internal stakeholders. And then in 2023, 24 explored five websites and selected Final Site in June of 2024. And from that point, the internal work began of really collecting information from the stakeholders who have information on the website to ensure what content would be transferred over so that we can transfer over clean content and updated content. And that was a tremendous amount of work. And then in fall of 2025, we were able to put the final touches on in partnership with Final Site on our content pages and to do some really intentional work around our directory updates. And so.
This is going to reach. Okay. So just a few things to highlight for you all. As you can see right away, this pops up. So this will replace the banner from the former website. So if you go to the homepage of our old website, you'll see that banner up top. Try to put the most important information, so that's how we'll utilize this information. Good for like school closures, anything really important. And what's nice about it is you can click, don't show again, so once you see it, you, you know the information, you can ask it not to bother you again. And then if you do want to come back to it, it'll be right there. One of the things I am most excited about for the new website is the ability to translate. So if we go up to this button up top, you can click any of these languages. It translates it pretty instantly. And then you have the option to switch back and forth. So you can check it, go back, and then close out of it. Something that we made sure and we did very intentionally was make sure there was multiple places to find the calendar because that's one of the biggest requests that we get is, where can I find what events are going on? So you'll find it here, calendar. And you'll be able to find it here. You'll also be able to find it here. There's plenty of places. There were just a few of the places that you'll be able to find it. If you do go to the district calendar on the main page, you'll see it has all events from all schools. You have the ability to filter. So what's nice about this versus our old website is you can decide, I only want to see two schools. And for parents that like, oh, I have a child in Coda and in high school, they can just decide to select those. So say we wanted to take those schools out, and then it'll update that way. So you can filter through. Something that's also requested that is on the old website, but I just want to highlight that is also on the new website is the option for the one-page calendar. We get a lot of requests for that. And then also our cultural calendar, which is also available on our ADI page, which is also a very exciting page. So if you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see that we have our cultural calendar here as well. Another thing that I'm very excited about and I wanted to showcase was you are able to integrate social media feeds. So as you all know, we've started our Instagram. The Shen Athletics also has an Instagram. So Lucas had requested that we integrate that feed, so that's there. So you can see posts directly and it'll update automatically. And then something else that's very popular on our old website that we were able to incorporate, you can see the banner, so we have some nice hero images as you scroll through. And then we have our latest news section. So as you can see, I've included a nice picture of the Board of Education. A little highlight. So a nice big image with the caption. And then it also has this really nice section of upcoming events, so you can see what's happening right away. So this is the main district page. You also have the ability to navigate to all the individual school sites. So if you can find that, it's pretty easy to navigate. Overall, the user experience is much more efficient, easier to find things. There's not 100 million locations of one resource. It is very mobile-friendly. So I know a lot of people, it's more relevant to be scrolling the website on your phone. This is very responsive and very easy to use on any mobile device. Other than that, do we have any questions?
Do you need a password to get in?
Nope.
So everybody is open to getting in.
Not until November 3rd, as of right now, nobody can access it. Something, oh no, that actually reminded me is that we are changing our domain name. So we are switching from, I like to say ShenNet, I know some people say SheNet, over to shenschools.org. So that aligns more with the brand. It's clearer. It just, it makes more sense. So anyone after November 3rd that goes to ShenNet, it'll redirect pretty quickly to our Shenn School's homepage. We do recommend that if you have any like bookmarks saved or anything like that, that you just refresh them. And there'll be some other redirects as well. So like if you were to go to shennet.com/BoardOfEducation, that will redirect as well to the Board of Education page on our new site.
So I was, I think I remember, you guys saying that individual principals can access and modify their own pages. Is that?
So that's an eventual goal. It does allow like limited access to individual sites as well as like something that's really exciting to me is that individual schools will be able to post like their own news stories. So yeah, once we get up and running, we work out all the kinks. That will be the next step in giving everybody access to their individual sites.
And on the board site, we can, videos for the meetings that were there.
That's, that is not included on there. We can absolutely add it.
It's good.
Yeah. I think there's a link to the YouTube page, but we could embed actual videos into here, which would be really nice.
Yeah, that's what you got it for, right?
Yeah. Any other questions?
What about the club pages? Do they have to work with the principals to migrate those over?
That's all been migrated over. So we did have all the administrators take a look at their individual sites, relevant department pages. So that's all been looked over, so that's all been migrated. And with all that being said too as well, like once we launch, there's obviously going to be things that might need to be updated, changed. We'll find that as people give us feedback. But this is really great user experience and we're really excited about the opportunity to have people get in there and give us feedback as well.
Yeah, it looks great.
Thank you. Much crazy amount of work, so that's amazing.
Great job, Brooke. Okay, moving on to action items. I'm going to put the gas pedal down, guys. I promise. Approval of e-rate network equipment purchase. Can I have a motion? Naomi's first. Petra, second. All in favor? Motion passes. Staffing recommendations.
So good evening. You have in front of you the staffing agenda. Nothing specific to point out tonight.
Great. Any questions for Jenny? Okay, can I get a motion? Mary Collins first, Andrea second. All in favor? Motion passes. And then thank you, Dr. Lloyd, for hanging out with us all night tonight. The resolution that we talked about in the beginning, I will read it. Be it resolved that the Board of Education appoints Lauren J. Gammell, Capital Region BOCES District Superintendent, as the search consultant for the replacement of Shenandoah Hallard Central School District Superintendent of Schools. That is the resolution that we'll all be signing tonight. Can I get a motion? Naomi is first, Andrea is second. Any further comments? Okay, let's do it. All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Awesome. Good stuff. Okay. Who's got a good of the order?
Can I just do two things really quick? Everybody's got the BOCES annual report from last year. It comes out this year because it takes time. They have to link the financial audit. And that's why we have it. It is really good information. I won't go into detail. MISMA resolutions, that was last Thursday. 24 were passed out of the, what, 34 total resolutions. All of you received that report as well. And the one I think that I thought was interesting was that very last one about mandating recess in New York State. We do have a policy in Shen that incorporates recess. But now all schools, well, it's actually now at this point it goes to the state and they lobby for it and we'll see where it goes next. But I just want to share that. And I also wanted to give a shout out to one of our seniors that is a BOCES student. And the reason is because we just had our open house on Friday for the new extension building. And it was an opportunity for the community, well, invited members. I do believe we had school officials and we had legislative officials there. There was a presentation and that student, Emma, I think it's pronounced Wieland, one of our seniors, who is also in the manufacturing and machining technology program was there. She gave an amazing, really good speech. One of our high school principals, Mrs. Pelletier, was there to support her. And that was also fun to see. Also happened to be the fifth grade teacher of Emma when she was in elementary school at Orinda. And I thought it was very exciting because I went up to her, I asked her, so what's next? And she says, oh, I'm going to do mechanical engineering. And she had cited her university. I thought, wow, she, it was just fairly exciting. So I just want to give a shout out for that, for that student. I don't know that we always recognize our students in these programs. I'm wondering if I'll see her at the Technology Honor Society, but I want to give a shout out for that. And that's it.
Anybody else?
Excited for Technology Honor Society and plays coming up in a couple of weeks. So get your tickets, everybody. I think it's going to be excellent as it always is. And shout out to Mike Tom.
Anybody else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Carla's first, Petra's second, all in favor? She carries. Thank you so much.